Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. That clock is wrong, so it's nine o'clock by my watch, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a meeting presented to the Texas Open Meetings Act of the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas. Today is Tuesday, May the 12th, 2020. It's 9:00 a.m. And we are in the Century Drury Room of the Hood County Justice Center. Today, we have with us Dr. Bill Miller has brought with him Reverend Terry Louven. Yes, you are. I mean, if you can be the chaplain for the sheriff's posse, you can. I can call you pastor or reverend, whatever, and you're sitting next to Dr. Bill Miller. But anyway, he goes to the First Baptist Church here, and he is, along with his wife, who's the head minister of the Hood County Sheriff's Office's posse. She's the head, he's the assistant, but he's gonna give us the invocation this morning, so please. Terry Louven.
Heavenly gracious Father, Lord, we give you thanks for who it is that you are. And, Lord, we ask for your presence this morning in this assembly. Lord, we give you thanks for the opportunity to serve, as you have placed these men and women in this gathering for the positions that they have and for the work that they have to do. Lord, I pray and we pray for clarity of mind. I pray, Lord, that you give them wisdom beyond themselves, knowledge and wherewithal and the strength and the courage to execute what it is that you have called them to do. Lord, we give you thanks for each and every one that you have placed accordingly. We thank you, Lord, for the assembly that is here this morning. We ask, Lord, for your presence in each and every life. Lord, our community is about to come out of a very distressful time, and, Lord, it is by your hand, the hand that we slip our hand into, as you lead us and guide us through this and many things to come. Lord, keep us safe, keep us whole, keep us healthy. Lord, we give you thanks for this community, for the understanding of everyone that lives here, of what it is that we are all doing and what it is that you would have us do. Lord, we love you, and we give you thanks, and we give you praise and honor. We glorify your name. Lord, hold us together. Put your arms about us as a community and as a group of people, lock your fingers together and draw us close to you. Help us to watch for your hand at work, to listen to your small voice, and, Lord, when you speak, let us do as you would have us do. Lord, we're so thankful for your presence here this morning. We love you, and it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all join me to place allegiance to this great nation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forth which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in the pledge of Texas. On behalf of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It is now my special honor here today to read a special proclamation today. Now, just, I wanna go ahead and read it. This is about childhood praxia. Did I pronounce that right? A very dreaded disease, a horrible disease, but I hope that we're making progress for it. But May 14th marks Childhood Praxia of Speech Day, and Hood County has a special proclamation here that we're going to present to Mr. and Mrs. Swain here, but I would like to read it first. Whereas May 14th marks Childhood Praxia of Speech Day, during which a world is would be raised throughout Hood County, Texas, about childhood praxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder for children. Whereas childhood praxia of speech causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits in children. Whereas the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, those with praxia endure an incredible and lengthy struggle. Whereas without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with praxia are placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. Whereas that such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities if not resolved or improved. Whereas most children with the praxia of speech will learn to communicate with their very own voices only if they receive early intervention, appropriate, intensive, and frequent speech therapy. Whereas it is imperative that there be greater public awareness about childhood praxia of speech in Hood County among community members, physicians, education professionals, policymakers, and elected officials. Whereas funders such as insurance providers, schools, and policymakers are encouraged to recognize the critical need to provide adequate speech therapy and other services so that the impact of this disorder is minimized and so that thousands of affected children can grow into productive, contributing adult citizens. Whereas our highest respect goes to these children as well as their families for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. Let it be resolved that May 14th is the praxia awareness days, and citizens of Hood County, Texas, and surrounds are encouraged to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood praxia of speech. Given my hand and seal on this 12th day of May, 2020, Ron Massengill, Hood County Judge. I am very proud to award this to Mr. and Mrs. Swain.
Now, y'all, go ahead, Judge. You take care. I can go down there with you.
You want to say a few words?
I would like to, if that's okay.
Yes, yeah. Let me give this to you, and then you can say that all of your folks, thanks, it's your honor. Good Lord. I gotta do that.
Got it. Thank you.
Oh, this is Nicole, advanced wife, her from Calvert, and she's gonna kind of give a little more information on this, so you have to forward.
Thank you. Very pleasant. So, see, he cannot be here today. Here he is. Okay. Thank you for helping me raise awareness for childhood praxia of speech. To give you a bit of information on why raising awareness is so important, I'm gonna tell you about Sergeant Henry and her being with the praxia. First, a few facts about childhood praxia of speech. It's a motor playing disorder, meaning the child knows what they want to say, and all their muscles and everything work just fine, but there's a disconnect between the thought and the muscles that make the, you know, work. It's something that the child is normally, they don't grow it. When they tend to very specific speech therapy, the child can learn to speak. And then, resolved cases of praxia, all of them very different. So, some adults who had it or heard the diagnosis of the childhood, you may listen to them and never know that they had any problems. There's a good amount of adults who are resolved that sound like they were very taxing them. And then, there are some that are still intelligible and, of course, everything is imaginable. So, about Hudson and Henry, I didn't know that Hudson was born with praxia. I didn't know he had it until he was four years old. And when he was 18 months old, he began receiving early therapy because he wasn't walking and he wasn't making any verbal sounds. By the time he was four years old, he was still completely unintelligible. He had developed some sounds and some approximations that had to do with their speech. He didn't seem to any therapist during his two and a half years, and had worked tirelessly with them that ultimately had made any progress. Finally, one day, the speech therapist who was seen at the time said to me, you know, Hudson really isn't making any progress like he should be. Have you ever heard of praxia? She said, I don't know if I would even speak to it, but I'd like you to research it and see what you think. Of course, I know how to read it on Google. And through my, all my research, I felt very strongly that Hudson had childhood praxia of speech. I also found that there were hardly any speech therapists trained in treating him. And through all my doing, I found that one therapist before her, and immediately put the call her. Her name was Marilyn Rainey. Her had spoken on the phone for well over 30 minutes, to ask me more about Hudson, basically straightening him for a full evaluation. At the end of the call, she said to me that she felt like Hudson did need some higher therapy for praxia, and that she would like to see him in her office for a full evaluation. Valuation came, and off we went to see Mrs. Marilyn. It was a gurst of three hours of watching this lady using all of this testing to evaluate this speech. Finally, it was over, and she said she would cut together her report in the bathroom. So, another couple weeks of waiting, and a final mistake call from Mrs. Marilyn, and she tells me the words, which name's her last. I'm not used to Hudson with childhood praxia of speech. Many parents described the initial diagnosis as being heart-wrenching or terrifying, but for me, it brought up hope. She recommended he come to her office for speech therapy five times a week for 30 minutes each session. My husband and I, we're working full-time, we're not committed five times per week, but we decided on three times a week for 30 minutes each session. That's the word for your career. Hudson is now eight years old, and we are still seeing Mrs. Marilyn. His speech is about 85% intelligible to a familiar listener, meaning his parents, his sister, his grandparents, and teachers. And Hudson still has years of speech therapy ahead of him, though we are still trying to help him, and know this child would count. So, why do I raise awareness for childhood praxia of speech? Couple months ago, a little girl in Hudson's class was talking to me about Hudson and how he's treated Hudson when he had children in his class. She said to me in her sweet, age-old voice, it's just a praxia, nothing to be afraid of. I raise awareness so that eventually everyone can say, it's just a praxia, nothing to be afraid of. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swain. Thank you. Very nice. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Nicole, when you called me about this, I've never heard of this, so it's good to make the public aware of what's going on, and thank you for presenting that to us to give to the public. Thank you.
Thank you for making it happen, Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next thing, next agenda item is, is that anybody wishing to speak on any of the agenda items, the sheriff has some public participation forms that we ask you to fill out, and then the sheriff is gonna hand these forms to Katie Lang, our county clerk, and then she's gonna hand them to me, and you're gonna be able to speak in order of how they were handed to the sheriff and to Ms. Lang. So, if y'all can do that, please, if you want to speak. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Does anybody on the Commissioners Court wish to pull any item off the consent agenda?
I move we'll accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to accept the consent agenda. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, the next thing, there are no operations. We don't get to see our friend Don Lenny today, but under development, we do have Mr. Clint Head.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. We have accepted an application for replat of the landings lots 3179R, 3180R, and 3181R. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for this replat for the June 23rd, 2020, Commissioners Court.
Okay.
Judge, I'll make that motion to set a public hearing for the replat of the landings lots 370, 3179R, 3180R, and 3181R replats.
Second. Second. Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to set a public hearing for June 23rd, 2020, on the landings, those three lots there, second by Commissioner Dever. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Head. Next, financial. Ms. Kidd.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Today, we have presented before you invoices totaling $497,778.81. You've all been given advance copies of these invoices. The auditor's office has reviewed them. We see no problem and recommend payment.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of Ms. Kidd?
Any questions on the invoices over $10,000 or any other invoices?
You checked them over, recommend payment?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'd like to make the motion, consider payment of invoices with period April 9th, 2020 through April 22nd, 2020, and the payments of over $10,000, and I'll make that motion.
A motion been made by Commissioner Dever to accept payment of invoices. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you.
Okay. First item under miscellaneous, consider payment or discuss and take appropriate action regarding the purchase of handheld radios for the sheriff's department out of capital projects, sheriff's deeds.
Judge, Commissioners, over the last, well, since the end of the last budget year, we've been trying to find money where we can to update radios, to get, to be able to use the 700-megahertz system that we have in place now. So, this just goes in line with that. There are still short sum for patrol, so I'm come before you today to ask if we can get this approved and move forward and get these ordered. So, the invoice is for five radios, and that'll get me up where I need to be and all my patrol and related people for patrol. So, it's $17,963.60 to cover this quote. This is on a state contract, so everything should be good to go. And I did bring something to the attention of the auditor the other day. I don't remember when, what date it was on the agenda, but it's been quite a few months ago that we signed a contract, updated the contract with GTL. That's to get those iPads in the jail for the inmates to be able to do video teleconferencing and do a lot of different things that we've never been able to do before. Well, yearly, because of this new contract, we got a check for $30,000 that was sent to the treasurer and the auditor's office, so that should help cover this.
Okay.
So, that over the years, when we were able to get money from GTL for the phone system, it goes into just the general fund or wherever you guys need it to be. So, we just got that the other day.
Okay. So, it's a good deal. Ms. Kidd, you do account for that money, didn't you?
We will have it. We'll put it on the agenda. I would like to put it in Fund 55 for Soggy's sponsorship.
Okay.
So, we can get more radios.
Hey, Judge, I think a couple of the constables wanted to speak to this. I just, if you don't mind.
Oh.
I'll start with Constable One. Do you, Dalton, you got anything you would like to share?
I guess we could make an exception for Constable Dalton Thrasher since he's quitting us and going on to.
Green or Patrick?
To green, tour the world.
Yes.
Okay.
We've all needed to upgrade our radios, the sheriff's department, us, fire marshal and all. We're losing contact with these other agencies. We're not able to communicate with the city. No longer can we communicate with DPS, other agencies. We're still getting information and having radio contact with the sheriff's department and dispatch, but our radio systems and the mobile units and our handhelds need to be upgraded as well. And we approached the Commissioners Court back at the last budgets to get the court to consider allowing us to purchase enough radio units to go in our mobile units and our handhelds out of Fund 55, and it was gonna be looked into and discussed further, and it hasn't, we haven't heard anything else about it. So, we were gonna be asking if this is approved, we'd be allowed to piggytail on this to get the same kind of a contract and expense on these radios that we can upgrade ours as we can. We're both, you know, all four precincts are in the same boat as being able to communicate, so if there was a disaster or an emergency, it takes us a long time to get that information if we're in the same area, so we're, it's a safety issue that we're trying to get corrected.
Constable, do you have a number of how many radios you need for each of the four precincts?
Right now, I think we're looking at seven, eight units.
Seven to eight?
Yes, mobile units and handheld units.
For all four?
All four precincts.
You know about what that would be?
No, because we're trying to figure out what the.
But you want to get on the same deal.
We would like to be able to have the same 700 system.
To get a better deal where it's all, all together, lumped together.
So, we can work off the same contracts and vendors for radio systems.
Judge Commissioners, this was all lumped into the capital expenditures that I brought before you a while back, but because of financial situations, we haven't ever moved forward to that. As far as these radios, what I brought to you just now, that's five radios at that cost. So, this would be the best radio for the, for being able to talk to everybody. It's a three-band radio. And then, as far as the 700 series in the vehicles, those are about $1,800 apiece with an antenna. So, those are on the Kenwood radios.
Okay.
So, Dalton, would it be possible to come back in the next court with some hard figures and numbers?
We can come back with looking at, you know, the model and vendor they're using, possibly another one, so we can look at pricing and contracts and stuff. But at the least, we would like to be able to use the same vendor and contract amounts for a radio upgrade for us, and we're trying to, you know, put together exact numbers for mobile units and handhelds, and then we'll get with the sheriff and find out what his cost and kind of put together a presentation for you for the next Commissioners Court. Yes, sir.
Sheriff, is that a fixed cost, or is it the more you buy, the better deal you get?
We're getting pretty good pricing right now.
Okay.
It's the state contract, and he even takes money off of that, so if we're at order five or 500, I think.
Same price?
500, we might get a little discount, but.
Talking 20 or 30?
Yeah.
Okay. You know where I was going with that. Maybe wait before we say, okay, for you, get the lump sum, but if it's gonna be the same price of seven or 15, I don't guess we can go ahead and go with yours and then whatever the court wants it to do.
And I'll get with, you know, his vendor and his numbers, and we'll put together a presentation for you for the next Commissioners Court meeting and put together the numbers that we need, and we'll see how.
For the constables?
Just for our constables, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Each radio is about $3,600 apiece.
Well, the handhelds are tri-band, the ones that I'm requesting today, and that'd be the best for everybody because it has the VHF that the fire departments, everybody is still on today. We're trying to transition them over to the 700 frequency, but because of cost, we hadn't got there. That was part of that package deal that I requested a while back for Fund 55. The city is on UHF, so this would make them be able to communicate with them, and then the 700 that the law enforcement is using, and it's all included with this. And the mobile radios, if they keep the VHF radios that they've got and then add another 700 radio in there, that's probably the cheapest, easiest, best way to do it, and those are about $1,800 with an antenna and coax and getting them installed. And that's a Kenwood radio. These are Harris radios.
Any other constables have any comment?
Always four radios. That's how Bonnie and Clyde got away. You know, you can outrun a trooper, but you can't outrun a radio, so.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I wanted to reiterate not just what Dalton Thrasher said about the, it's a serious safety issue not being able to communicate with the rest of the law enforcement in the county. Also, at least one incident for me in the last several months, right before the COVID stuff happened, where I was out serving papers and left the area, and a couple of minutes later, I saw two sheriff's department vehicles racing past my truck, and so I pulled up spillman and saw that there was like a burglar in progress happening, and I was only about a quarter mile away several minutes before that. So, it's an issue not just for police officers, but also for citizens. And on top of that, shortly after my deputy was sworn in, I tasked him with looking for grants to possibly help defray some of the costs for the county, and he very quickly located a Department of Homeland Security grant, but unfortunately, by the time we found it, there was only two weeks to apply, and the time wasn't enough for us to jump through all the hoops for the grants, because the grant process is quite daunting on the front end, front end of it, pardon me. And so, hopefully, I would, I would hope that the Commissioners Court would consider in the future maybe tasking or hiring some people to look for grants. There's hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars in grants out there, usually at any time, and I think we're missing out on saving the taxpayers some money for our county. So, thank you. If there's any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
If you find any money out there, grants, please let me know, and we'll get somebody on it.
Absolutely.
Well, it's funny you mention that, Judge. North Central Texas Council of Governments oversees the grants for juvenile justice, for law enforcement, criminal justice, our 911 system, and everything we have in the county. Well, in the top three grants approved for 2020 and new projects, the number one is Hunt County for $239,000 for radios. The number three grant approved by COG is for the City of Cochran Hill for $78,000 for P-25 radios. And then, at the same time, the City of Granbury is receiving a grant for $65,000 for Use-of-Force Simulator for the PD. These grants and these funds are out there to save tax dollars, and we need to be going after those and working as though, with those as multiple agencies within the county, within the city and the county together, to where we have better odds of approving those grants to get these things, to save money, but yet we're having to go out and we're having to use our borrowed money on Fund 55 to buy these communication radios. And out of these radios, we've already been through twice talking about the need and what the numbers were and how many we needed, but we keep putting those things on a back burner, and we're getting to the point to where there's, there's lack of communication to where it puts officers at risk, it puts people at risk in the rural parts of the county, and we just ask that you humbly think about that, and we will be glad to come back with you with hard numbers for that. Thank you.
Head, do you ever try to get grants?
We would, as Thrasher, or excuse me, Constable Shirley was discussing, he was going after a communications grant. There are certain things and criteria you have to have on grant writing. There's classes you have to attend first to be even able to go and submit to those with COG, and then there are certain guidelines you have to follow. He was going after those and was told that we already had money approved, and I'm like, wait a minute, we didn't approve that, and discussing with the auditor, all we did was just start laying the foundation of the numbers we needed, and by that time, it was unfortunate that that grant deadline was upon us. It was, it was two weeks from beginning when we found out about it to the end, but we're watching those things closely. We've gone after grants in my office. Our child safety seat program we have with the safety seats we get, we get those provided by a grant, and those that we've done for the public at no cost, that we've gotten those, those car seats for kids, child safety seats. So, yeah, we're looking at grants, and we're always wanting to go after more. We look at the military, the Texas LISO program on how we can save tax dollars for the county, what can we find to where it doesn't cost the taxpayers, it doesn't increase any tax money that we can. How can we improve things, unify together things that are available to be used by multiple agencies within the county? So, we look at those things, grants on communications. We're really starting to look at those a lot more, and we're really watching to make sure we don't miss a deadline again. But the sad part is, for 2020 is done, and some of these projects are on a two-year program, so we have to look at that, and we're trying to get more in-depth on what those are and where they're at with COG.
And I know that y'all have been able to get some equipment from the military, and I guess we have a bunch of stuff down there at the jail, you know, like ATVs. Is everybody in the county allowed to use them, you know, if we?
No, they're assigned to our agency that, for a year, and then we, you know, anytime the sheriff, we have an incident where we have missing children, years passed, we've had children missing and people missing on some ranches and some really rough terrain, and that's what those are for, to be used for. Constable Thrasher's got a 10,000-kilowatt generator that'll run this entire building that he got for free from that. We were looking at one of the tents, Fire Marshal's office, we set that thing up one day, looking at the COVID testing, how could we use these things for the benefit of the public, you know, in times of need, and that's what we've got those things for.
Yeah, I was just asking, you know, you got a couple of ATVs down there, and I'm just curious if, you know, like the ladies that have to pull the carts back and forth with the trash and stuff, are they able to use this?
No, the one thing we've done is, one of the things we received on a grant, and we've talked to Jay Riley about it, when it falls off our inventory off the program, we have a club car down there that's a golf cart that has a bed on it, so it'll help the ladies, and when that thing falls. and we've talked to Jay Riley about it when it falls off our inventory off the program. We have a club car down there that's a golf cart that has a bed on it. So it'll help the ladies. And when that thing falls off, we want to take that and utilize that with Jay for his people to use on this complex for different properties. We've already discussed that.
Well, I appreciate it.
You betcha. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, Nelda?
I would like to request that if you allow the purchase of these radios, that when they come in, that either purchasing be called to their facility in order to tag them before they go anywhere. We have a huge problem with radios because they are so horrible, most of them. Trying to track up them. And we'd like to ensure they're tagged properly so that we can keep track of them.
Or inventory purses?
Inventory purses, that is correct.
They come to, the radios, will they come to the sheriff's office? Okay, well, Sheriff, I guess you can just take them.
The more recent ones, then we send all the serial numbers to purchasing. So I keep, John Berry is the one and Lynn that are keeping up on all of that. So we'll make sure everybody's on the same page.
Okay, okay, good. All right, so I guess we just have the first motion is to accept the five radio bid for the sheriff in the amount of $17,916, Drew. I hear a motion regarding those radios.
Judge, I'd like to make that motion to allow the sheriff's office to purchase five radios for $17,963.60, Rogers, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Dever to purchase the five radios at $17,963. Second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, five zero. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
And I assume that at the next Commissioners' Court, we're going to discuss the additional radios for the constables then, okay? Good? All right, good. That brings us to the second agenda item then, about consider and take appropriate action to transfer two Tahos out of the sheriff's fleet, Unit 307 and Unit 325, one to go to Jay Riley in facility maintenance and the other to go to Clint Head in development. The illustrious Lynn McDonald, yes, sir?
I got the paperwork ready to go. I just need y'all's approval.
Okay, so I guess if Jay Riley needs one and Clint Head needs one, that's going to two good places right there.
Well, that's questionable, but, you know, we'll, you know, work through it.
So if we didn't do that, what would you do with them if you weren't handing them down?
They'll be on Renee Bates. We'll sell them.
Auction them off?
Auction them off.
So this way you give one to Clint, who I think already has one?
Yeah, I think Clint's got one, a pickup that's running around 200,000 miles on it.
So we can get rid of it?
And we can get rid of it. And Jay, since y'all gave him a new employee, well, he needs an extra vehicle. For him, he has none at all.
Jay has been using his personal vehicle, so that needs to stop.
These would be a good place for them to go right now and would save the county some money. We always like money.
We do. Well?
Hey, I'll make the motion then to transfer the two Tahos out of the sheriff's fleet, Number 307 and 325, one to go Jay Riley in maintenance facility, maintenance, and the other to go to Clint Head in development.
Question on that, on that, the vehicles that Clint has, it'll be sold and go back into y'all's fund, right?
Well, it goes to Fund 55.
Okay.
All vehicles that are sold now goes back into Fund 55. And Clint can bring that one down and park it in our impound and we'll handle all the paperwork on it.
Very good. I'll second that.
Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to transfer two Tahos out of the sheriff's fleet, Unit 307 and 325, one going to Jay Riley in the maintenance department, the other to go to Clint Head in development. Second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, five zero. Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
You're welcome.
Okay, this brings us to item number three. Discuss the constitutional oath of office for all elected and appointed officials in Texas as required by Article 16, Section 1 of the Texas Constitution. Commissioner Eagle?
Yes, Judge, thank you for, thank you for reading that. And just wanted to, wanted to go over this today because we've, we've been in a very critical time in this country with the government shutdowns and the essential versus non-essential. And what our job is as your government elected officials and appointed officials, what is our job? And the oath of office comes right out of the Texas Constitution, Article 16, Section 1. And the oath is pretty short. It just says, "I," whoever the person is, "solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office, insert office, of the state of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God." And when we started this meeting today, we did a pledge to the United States flag and the Texas flag. And I'm going to stay with Texas because we're basically under the Texas Constitution as county officials. And the pledge to the Texas flag says, "One state under God." Again, God is who we're making the pledge to. We're not making a pledge to one state under Abbott. I don't see anywhere in the oath that we will preserve and protect and defend our Constitution unless the governor tells us not to. I don't see anywhere in this oath, and I don't remember in the back of my mind when I took this oath, that when I swore this oath to protect, preserve, and defend the Constitution of the state of Texas, that in the back of my mind, I went, unless the governor tells me not to. The governor does not have the power to dictate to me what I do as your elected official. No man does. I repeat, no man does. No governor, no president, no judge, no one. God. I took an oath to God. And actually, Governor Greg Abbott does not have the legal authority to dictate to me that I blatantly disregard the Constitution and the exercise of my duties as a county commissioner. I do not work for the governor of the state of Texas. I work for you, the taxpayers in this county. The governor doesn't pay me one penny. The governor of this state is not my boss. I was elected by local constituents who pay the taxes that pay my salary to represent them and to protect them actually from a government that may be getting out of control. My main job is to protect your individual liberty and try to spend as little of your hard-earned money as possible to provide the essential services, there's that word, essential, essential services that a county should provide. This is what the folks in precinct four expect of me. Folks like Mr. Abear, Ms. Dix, Steve Biggers, Bob Swearingen, folks like that who live in my precinct. I'm here to do everything I can to protect their liberty with as little government interference as possible. My job is, and we talked about this the first court we had when this COVID stuff began, my job as elected official is to protect your liberty. Your job is to keep yourself safe. So before I took the oath of office, again, my oath was to God, to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution. I'm not questioning anybody up here at all. I am just stating what I perceive to be what my oath of office means. Someone else may have a different idea of that. But I mean no harm to anyone and I mean no disrespect to anyone here. I'm just standing up for what I think it means for us to represent you in this county. And that's why I put this on the agenda. If other commissioners or the judges want to talk about it, that's their, they can. This is not a vote-on-agenda item. It's just, I wanted it out there for you to understand where I stand. Thank you.
I have three, two public participation forms that were signed by two citizens to speak on item number three. The first one that was handed to the sheriff that was handed then to Katie Lang is Dr. Harold Granick. And then the second person to speak is Robert Boucher to speak on this topic too. So, Dr. Granick, you're first, if you'd like to speak on this. You have a maximum of five minutes.
Thank you, I will under that. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I'm in precinct four, so Commissioner Eagle also represents me, not only those people he named. The allegiance we take to the flag of Texas, the oath is not, not to God, but actually the allegiance to the state and to honor that. And we have the pledge of allegiance to the United States with the, to uphold the Constitution. The Constitution, its very preamble is, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity to ordain and establish the Constitution of the United States of America." But I stress that at one point, promote the general welfare and what the good commissioners have been doing. And Governor Abbott is trying his best to do is to promote the general welfare, which sometimes requires some limitations rather than everybody being free to do whatever they want to do. So there are differences of opinion. We have Supreme Courts which decide what those, if constitutional rights are violated, there are courts that decide that rather than individuals who decide that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Granick. The next person who wants to speak on number three is Barbara Boucher. Barbara?
Don't get nervous. I'm not going to read the whole Constitution, I promise. "This Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof and all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land. And the judges in every state should be bound thereby, anything in the Constitution or laws of any state to the senators and representatives before mentioned and the members of the several state legislatures and all executive and judicial officers, both of the United States and of several states, shall be bound by oath or affirmation to support this Constitution. But no religious test shall ever be required as qualification to any office or public trust under the United States. Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and petition the government for redress of grievances." I totally agree with what Commissioner Eagle has in his resolution. Each one of you took the oath of office. You swore to God that you would protect our constitutional rights. And I feel like our constitutional rights have been stomped on. I feel like Governor Abbott overreached. And I feel like you let us down.
Okay, that's the, thank you, Ms. Boucher. That is the only two people that wanted to speak on item number three. So now I want to say something. Dave Eagle and Dr. Granick and Barbara Boucher are all friends of mine. We see each other, talk to each other all the time, and I want you to know that. On this item, we have a difference of opinion. The oath that we all took is that we would support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Texas and the laws of the state. Mike Lang, who's sitting there, who is our state representative from District 6, and Commissioner Eagle and I had a conference in my office after the last Commissioners' Court meeting, trying to see if we could resolve this. And we said, and I said, and let me read something to you, ladies and gentlemen, is that powers and duties of the governor is that the governor is responsible for a meeting. Number one, the dangers to the state and people presented by disasters. Mike Lang and I agree that these disasters were thought about at that time when this law was passed to be hurricanes, tornadoes, brush fires, the explosion that occurred outside of Waco in West Texas, not West Texas, but the city of West in Texas, which is a quantifiable disaster. We all recognize it as such. And then you just have to come in and start the repair of that disaster. The last pandemic that we had, and I know there's a lot of now conflicting, and I will agree with that. I don't know what the effect is going to be of COVID, whether it's a real pandemic, whatever it is, but it's killing a lot of people. But the point is, we hadn't had a pandemic since 1918, the Spanish Flu. So I don't think anybody in the state legislature was thinking about pandemics when they passed 418.012. And it says, "Executive orders. Under this chapter, the governor may issue executive orders, proclamations, and regulations, and amend or rescind them. Executive orders, proclamations, and regulations have the force and effect of law." The oath that we took was to support the constitutions of the United States and state of Texas and the laws of both of those. Our founding fathers divided our democratic republic into three branches of government, the legislative, the executive, and the judiciary. The legislative is really the most powerful. According to Justice Scalia, my favorite justice, and I agree with it, they make the laws. It's up to the executive branch to enforce them and the judicial branch to interpret them. I think you can ask Representative Lang, he and I talked about it, that at the next legislature session, I guarantee that there will be new language in 418.012. Would you agree with that, Representative Lang?
I would hope so.
The what?
I would hope so.
You would hope so? That's what I think it's going to be. But ladies and gentlemen, I not only took the oath, like everybody up here took the oath, to support the constitutions, but the laws. This is a law that passed the state legislature. And the governor issued these orders. And whether I agree with them or don't agree with them, it's the law. Let me give you a real good example. There was a Supreme Court decision that would just interpret it laws called Troxel. And all of us in here of the age, I have grandchildren, one granddaughter. Troxel says that a parent gets to decide how that child, their child, is going to be raised. And unless you can prove that there's a significant risk to the impairment of that child, grandparents have no say in seeing the child or how that child is raised. I hate that law. Despise it. Fortunately, I'm in a position where I will never have to rule on that particular law, but I hate it. But I'll have to abide by it. That's why my daughter has me over a barrel. She can almost do anything she wants, and I'll have to go along with it because I want to keep seeing my granddaughter. That's a, that's a pathetic case. When I first started practicing law, I used to routinely represent grandparents, and routinely the judge would say that there are four fifth weekends in a year, and grandparents would get one of, all of those fifth weekends and a week in the summer, which is fair. But you take one parent, either mother or father, that dies, and usually the other parent remarried, and they may decide that that in-laws shouldn't see their children anymore. There's really, really probably nothing you can do about that if the burden is so high. Man, I don't like that. I don't like that opinion. And I think it was passed by, I think, six to three. So, six unelected old people in Washington and DC is telling me that I have no rights over my granddaughter and I can't even see her. Man, I don't like that law, but it's the law. Now, getting back to 418 here, the governor said, "We have a disaster," and he declared a disaster, and that's the COVID-19. And then he issued orders pursuant to 418. And our county attorney, Matt Mills, wrote Attorney General Paxton and asked him, "Are these orders constitutional or not?" I've got here an order from Ken Paxton's office dated April the 30th. It's addressed to Matt Sebastian, who's a county judge in Brazoria County, where he asked whether local governments may allow business to reopen if they're not essential. That was the whole basis of it. And I'm not going to read all of this, but I have the opinion up here that I can give to everybody. I think I gave you one, didn't I, Representative Lang? I don't, I don't know whether I did it. Anyway, I have some up here. Let me just read parts of it. As explained below, this is Attorney General Paxton on his letterhead. Now, it's signed by a guy named Ryan Vassar. And on May the 8th, four other Attorney General opinions were put out. These other four opinions were signed by Ken Paxton. But there were three other signatures on the other, three or four of the signatures on them, and Ryan Vassar's signature was on all four of those other opinions. He's the legal counsel and assistant Attorney General. He said, "As explained below, the governor's order is neither vague nor unenforceable, and local governments are prohibited from allowing businesses to reopen unless they are recognized as essential, or reopen services under the governor's orders." It's this plain. I had one citizen, when I gave this trip, says, "Well, this is addressed to Matt Sebastian. He's a county judge in Brazoria. Why isn't it addressed to you, Ron Massengill, county judge of thing?" They don't, just like in that case, I hate Troxel. They didn't write it, an opinion and send it to everybody. This opinion is speaking to all county judges. It says this. There's nothing that we can do about it up here. My personal deal about whether I like this law or not like what the governor has said, I'm sitting up here, I don't have the jurisdiction here, and neither does this Commissioners' Court, in my opinion. Now, Dave Eagle has the right to his opinion, Barbara Boucher has the right to her opinion, and you can protest this law all you want. I totally respect that right. As long as you do it peacefully and don't destroy property and don't harm anybody, you have the right to protest. And those protests get to be heard, and they probably had a lot to do with the governor taking out the jail time of his executive orders. Think that's good? I personally have to think that that's good. I think he did it initially because he wanted people to really comply with the orders because when they first came out in like March 17th, I think, or March 13th, nobody really understood COVID-19 as much as we understand it now. There's a lot of conflicting theories. There's the Sweden theory, there are herd immunity. I mean, I don't know what it's going to be. I do know this, as soon as I could do something legally to help the businesses of Hood County, I did it. On April the 30th, I signed what is called an estatation clause that asked the governor, then since we had five or fewer active COVID cases, to let us open at 50% rather than 25%. That was allowed, and that's what I wanted. And so, I wrote the letter. It was sent immediately by Jay Webster to Dishes and the governor to say, "Hey, Hood County's not like Dallas and Tarrant County. Let us open. I want open. I want every business in Hood County to flourish, not do well, to flourish. I want, where they put your life savings and your hard work in it, I don't want you to lose your business. I want every individual to do well." And I guess if I had to say, "Do I have a dog in the hunt?" I kind of do as a county judge. And the Commissioners' Court, we're up here trying to budget the, balance the budget, to have money to pay all our salaries, to do all the services that we've been doing. This COVID could ravage the county. I certainly don't want that. I want us to have the money to do this. Anyway, we sent the four men, and it comes back rejected at 4:39 that afternoon. I'll never will forget. I go, geez. You know? They didn't go by Hood County records. Dishes, Department of State Health Services, DSHS, they call it Dishes. And I don't know. They don't accept Hood County's, they do their own. All the testing goes to Dishes first, then it comes back to Dr. Blocker and Jay Webster. Anyway, the next morning, Friday morning, they said that we did have five or fewer cases and we could open at 50%. So Jay Webster sent the notice to all the government of Hood County officials and city officials saying, "Hey, we can open," and gave it to the newspapers and all media outlets, said, "Publish this. We can open at 50%." So Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we did it until Sunday afternoon, when we got another deal from Dishes that said, "Now you have more than five or fewer cases, so you're back to 25%." That's kind of hard to tell a restaurant, you know, buy the food for 50% and then you can't sell it or whatever. But I will say this, my wife and I have been going to restaurants and been going to businesses, and I got a haircut, and I got my money's worth, as y'all all can see. Most businesses were so careful about protecting themselves and their employees and their customers that they wouldn't even open to 50%. They were open about 25%, and I asked them about it. And they said, "Well, we want to see how it all works out. We were going to give it a dry run and see how it works out." Now, that's being responsible. And I agree with Dave Eagle and Barbara that people in Texas do have the right and responsibility, especially here in Hood County. This is an intelligent community. We're going to protect ourselves and our loved ones and our children and our older people, the people who are at risk. But people, I think that everybody in this room probably voted for Greg Abbott instead of Lupi Valdez, who was running on the Democratic ticket for governor. And we elected him to do this. And let me say this, Barbara. I want, I was talking to somebody, and they gave me this example here. When we all become citizens to live together, we give up some of our rights. We own some property out here, and Brenda and I built a home on our land. No neighbors around, nobody could see it. And since you're here, Mr. Biggs, I'm going to say this, you'll understand this. We could have not put in a septic system. Who's going to know? Can't see it, smell it, or whatever. Run it out about 300 yards and just let raw sewage just come out there. Could I do that? It's my house. It's my land. I don't have a neighbor for four miles. Can I do that, Mr. Biggs? No, I can't. Even though it's my property, my home, my sewage, I do that. I'm going to have somebody coming up there, and what are they going to do to me first? They're going to ask me to put in a septic system, and if I don't put it in, are they going to find me and then maybe ultimately put me in jail, Mr. Biggs?
Possibly.
Possibly. So see, that's a right that we give up. I don't have that right. We give up some of our right for what? The general health and welfare of our other fellow citizens. That's what we have to do. So, sometimes you have to do that. So, what it was, we knew that the disease was transmitted in close proximity to other humans. I think you can find something out there that says it's not, but whatever. That's what they were saying. And so, that's why in New York City and in Chicago, they've having, in New Orleans, they're having all these deaths where we've never had anything because we kind of respected that. And I think that our citizens will continue to respect that. So please, it's not just the laws of the Constitution. They have been modified, and we give them up to the extent that it's necessary to protect the general health and welfare of our other fellow citizens. So please, when you say, "I, I may not even like this law." Dave Eagle and I agree on probably 90 to 95% of everything we've ever done. I don't think that he'd argue with that. But on this one, we disagree. But that's our right, that's his right, and it's my right. I don't hate him because he says this. I want to work together with him. Hopefully, soon, everything is going to be, I would just wish they'd develop a vaccine. Of course, I'm not going to be the first one to take that vaccine, by the way, either. I don't know how the rest of y'all feels about it. But anyway, please understand that what's going to happen is that in 2021, is that when the legislature meets next, 2021? They're going to change 418.010 to take into account pandemics, because this is not the last pandemic we're going to have. We're going to have more, and it's going to take into account, when you have them over a long period of time, what the governor can and cannot do. Because if it comes at a time when the legislature's not in session, the governor is going to have to make orders and proclamations, ladies and gentlemen, and courts of law are going to have to follow them. And that's what my duty is. I don't like the Troxel case about grandparent access. I don't, I probably like the sewage case. All right, Mr. Biggs, you know, that's probably a good law, don't you think? You know? We give that right, even though it's our house or everything, but that's it. So please, I want everybody to really understand here. I am not for Dave's resolution. I'm jumping ahead of myself because he's asking us, as a Commissioners' Court, to declare that the governor's orders are invalid and unconstitutional and ordering, and we then declare them void and open Hood County wide open. I can't do that. That is unlawful. And I took this oath, Barbara Boucher, to uphold the constitutions of the United States and the state of Texas and the laws of the state of Texas. Governor Abbott did not pass 418.012. The state legislature did. And he issued his governor's orders pursuant to 418. Granted, there may be a court that at some time of competent jurisdiction that may rule that the governor's orders are unconstitutional. But until that time, they are the laws of the state of Texas. That's all I have to say about that. So, let's, don't let this divide our county. Please, we all love each other, we all know each other, we all go to church together. Let's have peace and harmony here and try to work together to let Hood County be the best county. Also, one other thing I might say, and Mike Lang and I, we work together, consider Mike a friend of mine, consider Katie a friend, all these are, all of y'all, I consider y'all my friends out there. But the governor has gotten a lot of federal money. I think the total was like 11.2 billion from the federal government to the state of Texas. Normally, the state legislature just hands out the money, distributes it. But the legislature's not going to be in session until January of '21. Cities over 500,000 population got the money directly. So the feds just sent it to Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, et cetera. But the governor got, I understand, 5 billion, 4 billion. He's not going to hold on to it till January, he's going to distribute it. And let me tell you what I want. I want that governor to give the citizens of Hood County that suffered any damages because of COVID-19 their full and immediate restitution. I want them to get every penny that they're entitled to. I want every business to get every penny that they're entitled to. And I don't want Hood County businesses and individuals to be 254th on the list of getting that money from the governor. I want our citizens to get the money soon. I want us to be one, the first county that he makes distribution to. And I think that sending him a resolution saying that your orders are illegal and unconstitutional, and we hereby declare them void, and we're open in our county wide open, is not the way to be number first and get our full restitution. So, please understand, we have the right to disagree. That's what's great about this country. But please don't hate each other just because we disagree on one item. You saw that all the other items here today, we passed them all, five zero unanimously. So please, understand that. That's all I want to say. That, that's it. Anybody else want to add anything?
Yeah, I got something. You've decided to litigate this now. I'm going to go ahead and point this out, with all due respect. But the first thing, first point I want to make is about an Attorney General opinion. Attorney General opinion. The, I've read the Attorney General opinions that have come out recently. The one dated April 30th, with no backing, with no law, with no authority, makes the blind statement that these are the governor's executive orders or neither vague nor enforceable. This, this, this AG opinion says nothing about whether it's constitutional or not, does not go to that. And here's why. If you look at AG opinion dated May the 7th, AG opinion KP0304 addressed to Matt Mills, that was dated May 7th, a week later. You look in footnote number three, and it says, "You ask," this is to, this is from the Attorney General, and by the way, this is signed by Ken Paxton, not Ryan Vassar. The footnote number three says, "You ask additional questions regarding the legality of the orders issued by state and local authorities. However, as explained in our April 2nd, 2020 letter to you, those issues are subject to pending litigation. Because this office has a longstanding policy of generally refraining from addressing issues involved in pending litigation, we decline to opine on your other questions and defer to the court's hearing on those issues at this time." Out of all the Attorney General opinions that have been flowing around here, that have, different jurisdictions have requested, none of them have gone directly to the constitutionality because of that. And number one, an AG opinion is just that. It's, it's not law. And I will point out in Mr. Vassar's letter, the last sentence in his letter dated April 30th says, "We trust that this guidance answers your question." And that'll tell you all you need to know. Words mean something. This is basically a guidance letter. So now I wanna go to the statute, 418.012, that was enacted originally as a, in the state legislature in nineteen seventy-five. This issue about a pandemic has never, ever been put forth to a court to decide. The issue of a governor's order shutting down everything, every nonessential business in this state has never gone before the Supreme Court in this state. And I am not arguing with the fact that eventually it's gonna get to the Supreme Court and it's gonna make, it's gonna have to be decided on. But here's the point. There's a concept called a justiciable issue. What does that mean? It means that you have to have an issue before the court for them to make a decision about it. If there's nothing in front of the court to look at, they don't just go, you know what, I'm gonna take a look, send me that executive order the governor issued, let me look at it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna issue an advisory opinion. Courts don't do that. Supreme Court does not do advisory opinions. Something has to happen where somebody gets arrested, sued, whatever, that goes to the issue of constitutionality, and it has to be a live case. And it has to be decided on to flow its way up to the Supreme Court. So I agree that someday that, that's gonna happen, sure. But here's what's interesting about it when you say, well, I, you know, the governor's order is the law. A district court could say it's unconstitutional. A appellate court could come back and say, well, no, it is constitutional. And the Supreme Court could come back and say, no, I agree with the district court, it's not constitutional. So there's nothing etched in stone. But as an attorney, I'll refer you to Rule thirteen of the Texas Rule of Civil Procedure, and it doesn't apply here verbatim, but it says, "Signatures of attorneys on a pleading says that they have read the pleadings and understand it, based on their knowledge, information, and belief, formed after reasonable inquiry, that the instrument is not groundless or brought in bad faith, or groundless and brought for the purpose of harassment." So even though we haven't gotten, we still haven't gotten to the resolution yet, which I can tell is not even probably gonna get a second, that's all right. But the issue is that somehow we've gotta get this to the court for them to make a decision. And I believe that if I made a motion, when we get to this resolution, to push it forward, and I got a second, and we got three votes in Hood County, that would happen for right this minute. And then the court gets to decide. So I appreciate what the judge has said, but there's a Supreme Court case that recently came out, and it was a writ of mandamus, and the writ was denied on jurisdictional issues. Well, what does that mean? It means the court said, we don't have jurisdiction to listen to this. So we're gonna, we're gonna kick it back down to the lower court and let them adjudicate the issue. I think it had to do with the hair salon in Dallas. Well, that's it, they're done. That's the opinion. We've denied the writ. But they spent a page and a half telegraphing what they're gonna do when they get one of these cases. And they're saying that every day that goes by with these executive orders, the way they are, and sequestering whatever nonessential businesses are and making people stay home and tell them they can't go out and, and feed their families, every day that goes by, the Supreme Court has sent a signal that the constitutionality of it gets thinner, thinner, and thinner. And I believe it's not there in the first place. So where does that go with the oath of office? Getting back to, that's what this agenda item was. The judge and I, he's right, we, we're friends and we, we can, we're both lawyers and we've both been on both sides of different cases in our careers and argued vehemently on either side of, of the other case. And I respect that, he respects that with me. And I'm just agreeing with the judge. We disagree on this particular issue. And I, the oath of office means what I think it means, and I don't think that 418 is settled law. And so I have a good faith belief that it's gonna get changed, and I have a good faith belief that the perpetual executive order that seems to never stop, now we're almost two months into this, is becoming more, I believe it was unconstitutional to start with, but I'll give them a couple of weeks because we were getting information that everybody had, you couldn't ignore. But now that we're two months into this, the constitutionality of this, and this is the Supreme Court itself, Texas, is starting to get on thin, thin, thin ground.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, let's move on to item number four. Discuss the potential economic impact of the current forced government shutdown of, quote, "nonessential," end quote, businesses in Hood County and how it may affect property taxes and sales tax collection in the county in the upcoming months. The only citizen that wanted to address this is Dr. Granik again, so you're the only one that wants to speak. Do you wanna speak on that?
I'll pass.
All right, he passes. So Commissioner Eagle, it's your.
Yes, sir, I brought this.
Even?
Oh.
Sir, I didn't, I didn't sign a statement saying that I wanted to speak on any of the particular topics, however, if you want my, my input as far as COVID actually impacted update on the community, I would love to share that with you.
I would like to hear that, Commissioner, come on up. We took, where's Delton Thrasher up here, Constable? There he is, he started this. If I made an exception for him, don't like that. Delton and I are go back a hundred years, so he's a good friend of mine, but we're gonna let public officials go ahead and speak.
He's a citizen, he's an expert.
Yeah.
Yeah, Judge Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to share. And, and again, I apologize. I have moved patients around and tried to, tried to accommodate, but I wanted to ensure that at least we had, we had an update for the commissioners' court, because this is new information from the Department of State Health Services and our other community medical facilities in the last twenty-four hours, which obviously didn't, didn't meet the, the timeline to get it onto the court agenda. I wanted to provide a few, few pieces of information, local statistics. In addition to the drive-through testing, of which we still have fifty-eight outstanding, outstanding tests that were done over the last two weeks through the collaborative effort between Department of Emergency Management and Texas Department of Emergency Management, Texas Military Department, we still have fifty-eight of those, those tests outstanding. But altogether, we've completed six hundred and thirty-six tests in our community, twenty-six of those have been positive, and we've had four new cases of COVID-19 reported in the last twenty-four hours. Two of those came from the state to us last night. The other two came from, again, our other healthcare, healthcare facilities around, around the community. And so, so again, I think it's, I think it's pertinent and important to recognize as we open the county, as we open Texas, we, we will, will, we have had some impact, and I, and I recommend that you consider, we can expect to continue to see more impact as far as positive cases documented in our community. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, that's not anything unexpected. I just wanna ensure that we recognize and acknowledge that as we make our community and government plans. Out of those four new cases, at least one of those is hospitalized in an intensive care unit. And I don't have any other details on the, enough details on the other three at this, at this time, although we're working on getting that information today. As far as the Dallas-Fort Worth statistics, as I've said, you know, Hood County continues to be at risk of substantial spread of coronavirus, as do our, our local, the local metropolitan area, Dallas-Fort Worth, continues to be under risk of substantial spread. Last week in Dallas-Fort Worth, there were hundreds more positive COVID-19 cases documented, over eighteen hundred, as, as far as what I've received so far in the last week and across Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex, and thirty-nine additional deaths in the metroplex. Again, so many of our folks live and work, or as we open businesses, we're inviting folks to come visit Grandbury and Hood County from the Dallas-Fort Worth and other areas. So again, we need to remain aware and consider that as we make the individual decisions of businesses and individuals as far as participating or opening businesses and government activities. Point number three is, Open Texas includes, and the collaborative effort between the governor's office, Public Health Commissioner John Hellerstadt, Department of State Health Services, detailed guidelines for every individual, for every business, every organization, religious institutions, governments, et cetera. Those checklists include continuing to consider maintaining six feet of separation between individuals who are not in the same family household. Be aware of the current signs and symptoms of COVID-19, of which we've added a number of those, cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, chills, repeated shaking with chills, muscle pain, headache, sore throat, loss of taste or smell, diarrhea, fever, measured temperature greater than or equal to a hundred degrees Fahrenheit, and known close contact with persons who are lab confirmed to be COVID-19. Any one of those symptoms are, are reason not to participate in regular work or, you know, activities other than self-isolation and seeking medical care. Continue to wash and disinfect hands, continuing to wear, wear masks if there's a concern, if you're entering a public place or where you're, you're forced to be closer than six feet to other individuals. So those guidelines remain in place even as we do Open Texas, as we do open our local businesses and institutions. Finally, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, unfortunately, we didn't get to that meeting before today, that speaks to specific guidelines, and again, these are guidelines from the Texas Office of Court Administration, Administrator, Director of Courts, recommending that if essential proceedings, court proceedings must be held in person, and you are not able to restrict no more than ten persons gathered in a courtroom or areas around a courtroom, still recommended that individuals wear masks, recommend that we remain consistent with social distancing, six feet apart, face covered if possible. And then, again, we're, so we're gonna have a meeting related to that tomorrow. My main concern is, again, that we still are aware of what those guidelines are. Every individual, including myself, we accept, we accept the personal risks and the risks to our family if we choose not to be out with, without a face covering on. And again, that includes me. But I do recommend that everyone should still at least have one. Every business has a, has a responsibility to protect, again, their, their employees and protect the individuals that are coming and going through the business, and every business has a right to require someone to wear a face mask into those businesses. I've been in grocery stores and businesses around Dallas-Fort Worth and Austin over the last week. Again, as we start to open Texas, a lot of those businesses require a face mask. A lot of those businesses require, you know, a maximum number of people to enter that business. And I recommend we do consider to consider those things as well. Just because we have permission to open Texas, whether or not we do it at twenty-five or fifty percent or beyond, regardless of which specific business is open, these guidelines remain in effect and the health, health risks continue to persist in our community. So I think we should open, I think we should do it safely, I think we should do it carefully, and I think we should still consider those rest, individuals and businesses and government. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blocker. Any questions? Dr. Blocker? Thank you very much, and thank you for the good job that you do.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate the time.
Hi, Doc, I got one question. On, on the, on the testing y'all been doing last couple of weeks, when does the information get out to, to the press or anything for the people to know what the test results were?
So as we have updates, we release them generally twice a week, has been the case. Again, this information came last night, and we're still researching and trying to ensure that we have the right information available. For instance, about ten days ago, about the time we were, we were looking at the opening guidelines, Department of State Health Services put an additional case on our list and told us we had another positive case, went from nineteen to twenty. However, once we researched that address, we were able to give feedback back to Dishes that, that actually, that address was actually in a neighboring county, and they removed it from our list, putting us back to nineteen cases and added it to the other county's list. And so, again, Dishes added two over, you know, late yesterday, and then there are two more that came to me through our, you know, different health agencies that are here in the county. So again, as we're confirming those facts, we will have an update later on today. Dishes updates generally come to me about four o'clock in the afternoon, and, and then again, as soon as I can verify and validate, we add them in the next day, so expect an update later today.
Could you mention at least the Kawasaki type syndrome, so people are at least aware of it, in children, that's felt to be associated with coronavirus?
I haven't, I haven't researched that or looked into that personally, so I don't have the details on that.
It's a secondary problem with children that's life threatening, but usually we thought that children were relatively safe and there's a very small number.
Very small number who can have severe outcomes from coronavirus.
Yes.
Yes, understood. I just, I don't have the specifics on the symptoms. Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to item number four. Bob Swerenging has, is here and would like to speak on item number four.
Is that the taxes? We back on the taxes, right?
No, it's, no, this is number four.
He's got number four here.
Oh, before we, okay, sorry, I'm lost place.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I don't know, can y'all hear me? All right. Setting the stage for a few points in support of all businesses opening, and all businesses are essential. Whether the governor has the authority to legislate or whether or not this COVID-19 pandemic is considered a disaster are topics for discussion. Yet another discussion is what parameters have been exceeded by the governor under under disaster, or has he not? As a reminder of these, the Texas Constitution, Article three, "The legislative power of this state shall be vested in a Senate and House of Representatives, which together shall be styled the legislature of the state of Texas." Be those things as they are, the perception at large is that the recommendations of the governor are law, tying it pursuant to the nineteen seventy-five law, 418. However, his recommendations are not codified. That is the work of the legislature of the state of Texas, and they have not made Abbott's recommendation into law specifically. And perhaps in February twenty-one, that'll, that'll be the, the case, we don't know. Now, consider the fact that even if all businesses were at a hundred percent running, they're lucky to run at a seven percent profit margin. At fifty percent, it's economic suicide on a micro level and on a macroeconomic level. We cannot afford that. Too many of us have forgotten what our grandparents taught us about the Great Depression, and that's where we're headed. Already in the state of Hawaii, they're sitting at thirty-five percent unemployment. We have over thirty-three million people filed for unemployment. This is a disaster of epic proportions, much greater than this COVID-19 that we're so afraid of. So we would like to have officials who understand that Hood County is strongly behind the rule of law, the Constitution, the Constitution of Texas and that of the United States of America. We don't look at some tangential connection to what you call law, we look at the Constitution. Much like the Supreme Court, when they passed some kind of precedent, there's a lot of people that focus on that precedent rather than the rule of law in the Constitution. Where are, where are our allegiances in Hood County? We hold to the Constitution. The majority of our people, the public here in Hood County believe in the Republican Party platform, which is the laws of nature and nature's God, and we suggest strict adherence to the original language and intent of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States and of Texas. We believe in, believe in limiting government power to those items enumerated in the United States and Texas constitutions. We believe in the inalienable right of all people to defend themselves and their property, including businesses, and some arbitrary dictate from the governor that businesses are not essential does not weigh with this at all. We believe in a free inter- We believe in a free, enterprise society, unencumbered by government interference or subsidies. Government interference. Who is the government to tell a business that they're not essential? Honoring all those that serve and protect our freedoms, such as Matt Mills. Now, these, you know, businesses that can't open at 100% are being told that they're not going to be able to make it. You know, they, they, they just cannot make it. And what is that going to do to our taxes? Well, they can't pay taxes. And then we're going to have the, you know, you've got people on one side that believe in raising taxes to fill our coffers, when we know that economically, if we lower taxes, people will be able to afford to pay those taxes, and the tax coffers fill up. Now, last point I'd like to make. We honor the hard work in industry that makes this county and state great. We understand that it is the industry of our businesses and the employees that make this state and this county number one, not our government officials or politicians. Elected officials sometimes become tyrannical, and they will pay for their own self-importance in future elections. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Swerenging.
Judge, could I, we're on, we are on this issue number four, and I just wanted to point out that we got a, and Becky's going to come speak to this to some extent, but we, we got a, we got an email from Eddie Rowe, the new appraiser, chief appraiser, and he says that due to the pandemic and the overall economic state, we anticipate an unprecedented protest season. And basically, when, when the county appraisal district, or the Hood County appraisal district did their appraisals back in December, January timeframe, that was before anybody knew about, at least in this county, about any kind of pandemic. And I think that some people are actually getting higher appraisals, some are maybe not. But I know that I got a, I got the Fort Worth Star Telegram here from yesterday. It says more than half of Tarrant County appraisals show no increase. And so Becky, if you would speak to the appraisal district and whatever else you need to say on this topic, I'd appreciate it.
For the last five years, overall value has gone up. In 2016, from 15, it went up 157.3 million. 2017, 551.3 million. '18 only went up 1.4 million. That's a weird year. Don't know. We did fine, so it's not an issue. In '19, it went up 435 million. In 2020, it went down 302 million. Now, I don't know why that happened. We, the judge and I, and Dr. Jeremy Glenn have been in contact with Eddie Rowe. We have not been given a complete explanation. But your point of property values going up prior to the pandemic raises concern with me. I'm one of the ones who, my property value went up. I imagine these business owners and everybody in here, your property values went up. If it didn't, you've been blessed, but mine did. So with that being said, how did the overall value, and let me explain that. There's total taxable value, that's number one. Then you have frozen value, which you subtract from total taxable value, so you get down to what is net taxable value. That's the numbers I gave you. That's the number that's most important to us, because that's where we're going to raise taxes to run this whole community: schools, government, city. So they are putting us at a disadvantage. This gentleman that was just up here, he said he wants to see our taxes lower. There's no way in the world that you can lower taxes with this money coming in. There's no way. We are at a point that I don't think we've seen in Hood County, because we've always had growth: new buildings, new homes, property values going up every year. We need an explanation, because if this does not change, we're looking at probably having to raise taxes just to make the money we are operating on now. And that is none of your fault, and I hate it, and I will spend a lot of nights losing sleep over this because it affects this whole county. We know our health insurance is going to go up. We know our retirement went up because of our plan. There's, we have no control over that. So we, we're at a bad point in our history, and I know that these business owners, they're going to hurt worse than we are, and I hate that for them. I'll do anything I can to help, but I don't know where to start, because as a judge and I will, have had discussions, we cannot get answers out of the appraisal district.
I know that you gave it all the court the same numbers, but we haven't got a valid explanation back from appraisal district why this is...
No, sir.
Where are their numbers coming from?
And the judge, he called, and we've tried to set up a meeting. We've done everything we can. Now, we will get the, these are, this is an estimate, but I, I hope he can put a pencil paper between now and July 25th, because he's got us in trouble.
What is, what's an alternative to raising taxes?
Cutting budgets.
Cutting budgets.
Cutting employees.
Cutting budgets.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's the only way I can say that you would be able to adjust it, is cut, you know?
Cut services. Cut services.
Salaries may have a big problem.
Yes, sir.
Becky, you told me while we had a conversation with this issue, that this preliminary, in the past, the appraisal district had come out with a preliminary, and then when they get the final, it came out quite a bit different?
Last year it did. When I, when I got the preliminary, I was like, uh-oh, and we were already, we were already looking at areas to cut and things to do. But then when we got the actual numbers, we were okay. I don't know how we're going to be $302 million okay in six weeks. I don't know what magic wand that Mr. Rowe can find, but I hope he finds something.
Hopefully there's a miscalculation.
I hope there is. I know he said he's been extremely conservative. I understand conservative. All these people out here in this audience understand conservative, because that's what they've been having to do: conserve. So I hope and pray he can give us some better numbers. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay. Mike Scott here from the Chamber would like to speak on item number four.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. Mike Scott, Grandbury Chamber of Commerce. I want to try to give you, put a positive spin on some of this, and I'm not going to talk about, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to talk about Hood.
I'm going to try to give you a little feeling for where the, for where the business community is, and I think we've got a pretty good feel for that, and I think sometimes we're shortchanging ourselves and we're shortchanging our community. It's been incredible watching businesses and watching how they've reacted to this stuff. And yeah, there's some folks out there that are blaming and complaining, but for the most part, that's a very small number, and that's people that want to fight something, whatever it is. But as you know, thanks to John and Rebecca Brumley donating $100,000 to the business community of Hood County, the Chamber and United Way got on board that and jumped on it. And to date, we've had 110, about 110 applications for a grant. We've given out, well, let me say we've raised, in addition to the $100,000 that Brumley's donated, we've also raised another $90,000 from the business community. I just got a $10,000 check from the Hood County Development District taken for yesterday. Your guys, Bruce. So, so as a result of that, we've given out 80 out of 100 applications, 105 applications, we've given out 85 grants totaling right up $190,000 to the business community. And in order to make sure that everybody got their grant, I had my staff divide up those 85 people, and we have talked to everyone, well, with a couple of, a couple that haven't called us back yet, but, and it's been very, very positive, and they've been thrilled about the money they got. Most of them got around 2,500 bucks. They're thrilled about it, and they're excited, and every person, when you ask them the question, and one of the questions on our application was, "Have you considered closing your business?" And basically, maybe two out of the 100 even considered it. And as we're calling now, and they're getting their checks, and they're going back to work, they're all excited about what's going on, and they think they're going to make it, you know? So, so I think that's pretty exciting. I will tell you that the part of the problem would be unemployment. This is a new rainbow. I've got businesses calling me saying, "I laid off much of my employees. I can't get them to come back to work because they're making more money on unemployment than they were." And one guy called me yesterday, he said, "I offered them $3 an hour pay increase," but unfortunately, the government's already given them that. So that $600 a week additional unemployment is actually an unintended consequence, I think. So a lot of businesses right now can't find people that want to work. So, but overall, I'm pretty positive about what's going on. You drive around the community, you go to the businesses, you go get a haircut, and by the way, I like your marine haircut, Judge. But, you know, you drive around the community, and I talked to my barber yesterday, and she's, she's, she's pretty positive, pretty, pretty happy to be back at work, and I think we're going to come out of this, it's going to be tough, but I think, I think Hood County and Grandbury can come out of it. So I know we're going to get some money from the state. That's a good thing. I hope, you know, we're talking about the shortage of funding. I hope we use that appropriately to offset some of the problems we've had and some of the potential problems. I think Dr. Blocker's comments about where this is going long-term, I think we need to take that on board. I, I'm a little concerned that, that once you open the door, it's just kind of gangbusters, and people forget about, you know, taking, taking positive steps to avoid getting the virus. So anyway, I, I'm positive about where we're going.
I got one question for you, please. Do you have, do y'all keep any numbers that, about unemployment here in this county right now? Do you have any idea what?
I can get those, I don't have them. I mean, it's been running pretty low. Before this, it was about 3.8%, something like that. Does somebody have them? No? Okay, all right. So I'll pull, I can pull those for you. It's kind of our track right now.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I just was, I was just hoping you had something.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Okay. Commissioner Eagle, do you want to say anything else?
I just wanted to start the conversation, since we got budget time coming, I think we've done that, so.
Okay. Okay, so now we're on item number five. Discuss restoration of all constitutional rights in Hood County resolution and take appropriate action thereon. Okay, I've got one, two, I got six people that want to speak on this. You choose to go first, Commissioner Eagle? Do you want to hear from the people first?
I want to speak first.
Okay. So Steve Biggers, you signed the first one, so we'll hear from you, sir.
Is there a second?
Thanks, I appreciate the question.
You have one.
I appreciate being able to talk. These all three kind of fit together. We all see that. We all see how they're kind of blending together. There are quotes all through our society that mean something to people, and Edmund Burke had a quote years ago that means something to me. It says, "The only thing that evil triumphs is for good people to do nothing," Sir Edmund Burke. You could take that same quote, you can take evil out, you can put prejudice in there, you can put fear in there, you can put tyranny in there. I'm putting injustice in there. This has been an injustice for our rights. People's lives and livelihood rights have been destroyed. People's family rights have been destroyed. You can't go see your ailing grandmother in the nursing home. Those rights have been destroyed. Their faith rights have been destroyed. It's okay to meet on a parking lot every other space. No, that's not okay. That's not the church. And traditions, traditional rights have been destroyed. There's kids that are never going to go to a prom. There's kids that aren't going to be able to graduate. There's, there's parents that go to a park to have an Easter egg hunt on Easter. Six people can't go to a park. You shut down the parks. The governor has trampled all over this, and many other governors have too, and been very complicit. So if you want to, if you want to agree that politics started at a global level, and they do, they really do, the federal government says there's states' rights. The states need to say there's cabinet rights, and they do. You guys all have campaigned, have raised money, have put signs in yards, have asked businesses to support you, have asked people to support you. So they all started on block rights. You've made promises. You've said, "Trust me, vote for me, I'll be there for you, I'll look out for you." Commissioner Dever, Commissioner White, you're done. Six months, you got another half a dozen, or done a dozen of these, and you guys are done. You've done your thing. I appreciate that, I really do. But you still have to look at these people in your areas and say, "What did you do?" You're going to be remembered for this year for what you're going to be remembered for, not what you started for. What did you do during the pandemic time? Where did you stand up for the pandemic time? You guys got to look at them. You got to look them in the face. Mr. Cotton, you and I had a conversation two weeks ago. I, I respect the procedural path that you took. That's something you can do. We tabled it last time. But then we had a conversation, and you expressed the fact that why even vote on it? Four to nothing, never went four to one, wouldn't have passed. And then you said, "Why do I need to let, listen to people pontificate and call me stupid up here?" I don't know that people are going to do that, but you chose to be in the public eye. With the public eye, sir, comes the public hearing. With the public hearing comes the public voice, and you need to accept that. That's what you've chosen to do here. If you can't do that anymore, cash your chips in and step away from the table. That maybe, maybe it's time to. Mr. Eagle, he is my precinct chair. I appreciate that, I really do. Judge, you, you have your office-side chats, and I love those. You've been very promising and uplifting with businesses and things like that, and you've quoted Ronald Reagan a couple times. I quote Ronald Reagan. On my website, Ronald Reagan had a quote that I used. "All small businesses are the economic backbone of this country." We have broken this backbone of the government. The governor has broken this. He has taken way out of control of this and way too much leeway with his orders. So my, my question to you, I've seen more backbone from a salon owner up in Dallas than I've seen in a lot of these gathers around here, these people that are wanting to step up and say, "We want to be for you. We believe in your businesses to stay open and your rights to open." Some of you, some of you, not all of you. I appreciate we're going to give money, I really do. I, I think the governor's saying, "Do comply, and I'll pay you." That's what he's saying. I have a new friend down in Hamilton County. There are signs all over that county, "Calm down and comply." The county's telling the people, "Calm down and comply." That's, that's, that's better. So we know, we know the governor's backing up, you know, he got the lady out of jail. We know the Supreme Court shot the vow, shot with a vow, saying, "Wait a minute, and this gets to us, we're going to rule a little different." Mr. Eagle's right. You have to start somewhere. We have to start at some place to say, "No, we don't belong to this, and we're going to kick it out, and we're going to let the courts decide." You have to start somewhere. So please don't be persuasive. Don't let the compliance be persuasive. So I just circle this back to where I started. Are you going to be good men? Are you going to, are you going to be good men? Are you going to be men of honor, men of character, men of integrity, men of conscience, promise keepers, that you promised to us that you would do and look out for us? We're going to do that. We want to believe in you. We really want to believe in you. We're waiting and we're watching. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Biggers. Okay. The next speaker is Dr. Harold Granik. Do you want to speak on this, Dr. Granik?
I guess Lala's not back area of expertise, but we know that we're given certain rights under the Constitution, such as the right of free speech, but also Supreme Court has ruled that you can't yell fire in the theater just because you have the right of free speech. We have to respect the people who decides what's constitutional and what's not. Some of these things may be decided that rights have been breached, but that will be decided in courts, and if someone feels strong enough, they can file suits against that. At the moment, our commissioners seem to be certainly in the majority, and the judge following the rules of the state, and those rights also reflect the, you know, the, in the Constitution's document, the pursuit of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. And certainly, if that breaching of life is foregone, then all your rights are taken away. People also think that, well, I'm immune to getting the coronavirus, but I can guarantee that someone who may get it, we can be very fortunate because our nurses have been conscientious, but if someone gets it, their yearly salary will probably be gone on hospital. but if someone gets it, their yearly salary will probably be gone on hospital bills. I mentioned earlier, this was now, this is going around, this late, some young children who were thought to be immune, but they're very rare, but a Kawasaki-type syndrome that potentially failed, you lose your kid, you're not going to be saying, "Gee, I didn't get my income this week." So I just want to, again, say that the court, looking forward to the commissioner's court and, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Okay, the next speaker is Todd A. Bear.
I'd like to start off by explaining what this is, the dictionary. I'm sure most of you have one, or at least seen one. It's kind of a portal to reading things, such as laws, government. What I'd like to concentrate on today is the word "order." In my discussion, these definitions are pertinent. First one is an authoritative command, direction, or instruction. I emphasize "authoritative." It is an authoritative direction or instruction to do something. Again, authoritative. I'm not sure you get what this means, so I'll explain in the military. Explain it. In the military, they give orders to subordinates. Now, even in the U.S. military, these orders go against codes of conduct or U.S. Constitution. The subordinate shall not obey them. In the times of kingdoms and kings, orders were given to the peasants all the time, and if they were not followed, the punishments were to be delivered. I'm not in the military, and I don't live in a kingdom where we have a king that I must bow down to. In fact, I have never, nor will I ever bow to any man for any reason or any order. The only way I will comply with an order is if I'm working for a company and I'm given an order to perform a task, which even then, I have an option to leave that place of employment if I do not want to comply or perform the task because I am giving aid lots of, lots of money. Because if you want to order someone in the United States to do something, then there shall be payment involved. Wait a minute, all of you get paid to do a job by me, by us, the citizens of Hood County. So in other words, you take your oath from us, your orders from us, and you get fired if not. Perspective? I think so. Moving on, we are a nation of laws and not of men. God, if I have to get that one more time, I may explode. Yes, we are a nation of laws, but we are a nation of laws because of men, real men, men with conviction, men with courage, men who know the difference between right and wrong, and willing to sacrifice everything to stand with the right. Men like Matt Mills, Mike Lang, Dave Eagle, Sheriff Dees, John Shirley, men like George Washington did Franklin in the name of him, Lincoln. Your cop-out is that the courts need to decide whether these orders are constitutional or not. Well, if you don't challenge those orders, then they will never be deemed unconstitutional now, will they? But then if it is found that these orders are not constitutional, then that takes away your almighty power, and also makes you liable for the orders that you issued prior to Governor Abbott's orders, and I've done it. What real men would have admitted their mistake, made it right with the safety of Hood County, and you had your chance. Commissioner Eagle gave you the easiest out he could. He threw you a home run pitch, and you still missed it. All people and all businesses of Hood County are essential. Such a simple and powerful statement, but couldn't be more true. Our business was essential to you, Judge, when you placed your campaign, signed my business on Highway 377. So when did it become not essential to you? When you won? When you didn't need it anymore? You tabled a resolution making people and businesses essential. You tabled it because you didn't want to hear the voices of Hood County. You hear them now? You hear the voices of the Texas Supreme Court and their opinion on the Constitution, that it would never be suspended even in a pandemic? I hope now that all this time, you realize that even though I said it time and time again, this was never about a gentleman, it was about people, citizens, and the rights bestowed upon them as free men and women of the United States of America. So now you get a second chance to make it right. I implore you to vote aye for the essential resolution, and at least try to save your jobs and the great people of Hood County, because this certainly will happen again. And just for the record, my fight was never with the city of Granbury, it has always been with the commissioner's court. City of Granbury was forced into it because you failed your oath to protect and defend the Constitution. As time passes, it's blatantly clear that you did. So I will not let the city of Granbury be the only government with a head on their face, even though that's what the Hood County is willing to report. The central line in all of this is that we, the people, got to see your true colors. They show red, white, and blue.
Thank you, Mr. A. Bear. The next speaker is Debbie Gregston.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I just want to read some Barbara Gaby, county commissioners may provide monetary assistance from the county general funds or individuals affected by disasters declared by county judge section 130 through 910. She says it's up to Texas laws. And several friends sent this, violation of Title 18, USD Section 242. Governors, mayors, police departments in multiple states are in violation of constitutional law who are targeting business owners who want to go back to work opening their business. I'm almost 66, I'll be 66 on the 22nd, and I thought the Constitution that I just read protected us. I had just started to work at Serenity on the Square about three weeks before this happened. My first week, I made $600. I've been unable to work since then. I have no family. And before the May 1st opening, Governor Abbott got on television, I didn't see it, I'm glad I didn't, and said that, "I've been licensed," let me back up, "I've been licensed for 36 years, I helped get the law into effect because we had to have people." And he sat there in a news conference and called where I work, which is a salon, not a massage parlor. I've never even worked in an ice cream parlor. I have abided by the rules, I have to have 12 CEUs every two years, I'm stuck regulated, I work on one person at a time, I have an N95 mask, you can't find them, maybe now, but you couldn't three or four weeks ago. And I have to tell you my story because I know that you're frustrated. Before, or on the first, Lisa Perret, who owns a salon, called and said, "You can go back to work." So I called TDLR, and they said, "No, you can't." 36 years of abiding by the laws, the state laws and being governed by them, I cannot go back to work in a massage parlor. I'm not considered a healthcare worker. I work on Wes Green, who's the ex-EMT director of Stevensville, who, who trains all your paramedics and EMTs. I work on Teresa Campbell, who's a 32-year retired care flight nurse. And for you to, or for whoever to say that my work is not essential, Teresa can move her arm, Wes, she was in a helicopter crash, Wes was in an accident where he was hit from behind trying to get choppers down. And I don't understand how anyone can say that that's not essential, or that everybody else got to go back to work except me, the nail techs, the hairdressers, everybody but me. And when I called, it took like three hours to get through to TDLR. And they asked the governor, that said, "We, and, and I understand your frustration and their frustration," because they've been asking him, "Why? Give us a reason why massage therapists can't go back to work." Because I don't, I'm not a sex worker. I'm a legitimate healthcare who loves to heal people, and I'm not able to do it. And he would not give us a reason or a date, just, "There's another rollout, just wait." And I, I don't have anyone to support me. It is nice, you know, if you can't get some, I'm hearing from people, they're not getting their stimulus checks or their unemployment, and my hairdresser can only work two days a week now. My groomer has had to close, a hamburger place has had to close, my dog runs back going down the steps because he needed his nails trimmed, so I've had to lift him up and down the steps. And I know maybe you can't do anything about it, but it seems to me that constitutional law should override Texas law. South Dakota didn't even close. I don't know if that's because of the oil money or what it is, but if you can do something, I want to go back to work, just like all of you, and all of you out here are working. It, it just doesn't make sense that you, you know, we have not been allowed to work with a mask on, and the right kinds of masks, even though some doctors will say it's not good to be wearing those masks because the germs can't get out. So if there is anything you can do, so I can go back to work and support my three doctors, I'd really appreciate it. But I understand you're tied, your hands are tied. And I want to thank Dave Eagle for coming to our rallies, and Todd A. Bear for standing up for all of our rights, because I feel like our constitutional rights are being trampled on. So please, if there is anything you can do, do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Nanette Samuelson.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me speak today. I just wanted to tie this back a little bit to the doctors up here. Just realized that as testing is more pervasive across Texas and the country, that you will see more increased cases, that doesn't necessarily mean there's more cases, that just means there are more cases identified. So I just wanted to get that point out, but what I really came here to talk about is, is this Resolution 5, or Agenda Item 5, about restoring our rights. And I understand that some of the concern about passing this at the last meeting was that, as you had said earlier, that FEMA may withhold funds for Hood County, and that they may penalize us for passing such a resolution. At first, I thought that sounded very compassionate and logical, but the more I thought about it, I thought, "Wait, does this mean throw enough money at us and we will throw out the Constitution?" Because that's what it sounded like after I thought about it. I submit to you, no. Our freedom and liberty are not forsaken. I strongly urge you to adopt, pass this resolution and restore the rights to every citizen and business owner in Hood County. Your comments earlier today, Judge, two, two things about that. Ag Bar, AG Bar, United States Attorney General, has stated at least once, if not twice, that the Constitution is not abandoned during this pandemic. As you said, pandemic was not considered in 4/1801. You mentioned sometime somewhere, this rule may be a rule that is constitutional. But if someone doesn't stand up to it and make a case for it, then it'll never be challenged, it'll never be decided. So I submit to you, adopt this resolution, and let's get our rights restored for all the citizens of Hood County and all the business owners that are suffering for the arbitrary and capricious way that essential businesses were, were picked and chosen winners and losers. If this was so bad, why aren't we seeing hundreds of thousands of cases at Walmart, Home Depot, Lowe's, where people are streaming in and out? People are being responsible and taking care of their, with their protocols, so why can't small businesses do the same thing? Implement protocols, there's not going to be as many people coming to these small businesses as are streaming through Lowe's, Home Depot, AGB, Kroger, all these places that have been open since day one. So that's why I have to say thank you for listening and that we do the right thing.
Thank you. Commissioner, is there any further discussion on item number five?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to kind of set the table for it, and then we can get to it and make a decision, and then we got a couple little items we need to wrap up, and we'll be through today. But I want to start, I've spoken, I've spoken about Texas law. This resolution that I'm proposing is based on Texas law. We're, we're guided by Texas law here. And that's, that's the, the principles by which we operate under. But I'm going to move over to the Declaration of Independence, July 4, 1776, says to, and, and I'm going to paraphrase, "To secure our unalienable rights, governments are instituted amongst, among men and women," throw that in, "deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." Now, that word "just powers" is in there for a reason. If there's, it's a, it's a term that means just, in the eyes of God, just under natural law, not unjust. We have, in this day and time, I feel like we have lost sight of the fact that governments were instituted amongst people to protect their liberty. And I said this a little while ago. Governments were instituted to protect our liberty. And I've heard some say, "Well, if we ignore the rule of law, then we descend into chaos." I've, I've heard that and seen that written more than once in context to what's going on right now. And the problem with that, with that statement is their response to that is a police state. The response to that is a police state. So we're not here to show you, and my, this is just Dave Eagle sitting up here on this end of the, in my opinion, our job as elected officials are not here to show you who's got the authority to do something. We're, we're Texans. We told Santa Ana back in that day to shove it, because we didn't want to be under a despotic ruler. We told them to come and take it. Now, I know that Governor Abbott has his hands full, and he's trying to do the best he can, considering that Texas is a large, huge state with five completely different eco-type of systems within it, and counties ranging from a few hundred people in it to millions of people. And I realize it's an impossible task for the governor of this state, just like it's an impossible task for the President of the United States, to sit there in their haunches, either in Austin or up in Washington, D.C., and tell us, everybody in this country, what's the best for them locally. You know, we are about local government. I've always been a proponent of local government. That's where you can actually come in like this and see us and talk to us and tell us what you think about something. So I want to refer you back to March 30th, 2020. I was sitting right in this same seat everybody was sitting in here. And if you want to go to YouTube, Hood County, we, we livestream these meetings, and we also archive them and put them out on YouTube. So you can go to YouTube and type in Hood County Commissioners Court, and click on it, and you can see the commissioners' courts, the recent courts that we've done, videos that you can click on and watch them, and go watch any of them. And if you will go to two hours and five minutes and 15 seconds, you can see what I had to say at that point in time, Mr. Granick. And I said, my objection to this order that the governor had entered on that day was, A, it's, I had three points. A, it wasn't constitutional, still isn't. B, at that time especially, it was not based on facts. And, and number three, it's absolutely not enforceable. Only one thing has changed, in my view, since March the 30th. One major thing has changed. We got a whole bunch of facts that have come in, a whole bunch of facts. Stanford study, University of Southern California study, studies out of Alabama, the epidemiologist, chief epidemiologist out of Sweden, who also teaches epidemiology out of University of Stockholm, who said we should, who basically told Sweden, they, they took the government position to let this thing run its, run its course, because he didn't believe that COVID-19 was as dire as they were telling us it was when it started. Their numbers have not been significantly different, it turns out. Because you know what? Facts, facts are an interesting thing. As time wears on and facts come in, if you were given a snow job up on the front end, sometimes the facts will prove that wrong. Now, which gets me, I'm getting close to putting, to this resolution. In my opinion, the only, the facts have changed significantly to- to the point that I don't understand why the governor doesn't say, you know what? We're really not in a disaster anymore. And I don't know how long, how long that we've got to stay under that edict, for lack of a better way to put it, the way 418 reads, which I'll guarantee the legislature didn't plan this, the governor can continue this from now on. I don't think they were thinking about that in 1975, that the governor can just su sponti on his own. So you know what? It's still a disaster. Once I declare a disaster, 418 takes effect, and I've got total power. There's, there is nothing constitutional about that in the long run. So I want to introduce this resolution. And I've called, I've changed it up, and I've updated it, and I've tried to, the governor's coming out with new executive orders so fast now, I can't keep up with them. So I finally just put, and subsequent orders to G21, because we talked, remember when I said something about enforceability? You saw a really great example of that when the hairdresser over in Dallas, that judge decided he's going to throw her in jail because she refused to abide by that order, and she wanted to open up and feed her family and pay her girls that work for her, or whoever works for her. And they arrested her, and she ended up getting sent, or sentenced to seven days in jail and $7,000 a fine. And the governor didn't like that and couldn't understand why they would do such a thing. It's like, well, it's in your order. You put it in the order. So that ought to be a pretty good sign that there's really not an enforceable order. You can't enforce something that you don't really know what it says. And it's very ambiguous, and an officer can decide what it says on the spot if he wants to. Barney V. I understand there's a Barney V. down in Glen Rose that laid out in a parking lot at a gym and put a ticket on the windshield for somebody that went in there to a gym. So anyway, with that said, my resolution, I'm just going to go to one point, and then I'm not going to read the whole thing into the record, so don't get scared here. But I am going to read two, actually. Article 1, Section 28. No power of suspending laws in this state shall be exercised except by the legislature. Right there in black and white. Now, the argument by all the legal scholars right now is that the legislature transferred that power over to the governor in Chapter 418 in a disaster. And I understand the argument. I understand it. So I don't need to hear it again. I understand that's the argument. But that's going to segue me right into Article 1, Section 29, all of which are in this resolution, a bunch of wherewithal is this and wherewithal is that. You guys can read it. Article 1, Section 29, provisions of the Bill of Rights accepted from the powers of government to forever remain invalid. And I did a video on this after the last court, two Tuesdays ago, if you want to go out and take a look at that. I go through all this. I'm going to read this into the record. "To guard against transgressions of the high powers herein delegated, the Constitution delegates powers to the different branches of government. We declare that everything, everything, didn't say, it doesn't say something, I'm going to commentate, sorry, everything in this Bill of Rights is accepted out of the general powers of the government and shall forever remain invalid." Not in, except if there's a disaster. Doesn't say that. "And all laws contrary thereto, all laws, even governor's executive orders, are to the following provisions, which are the Bill of Rights, any law contrary to that are void." So that's the basis for my resolution. It's pretty simple. And if it were, if some miracle were to happen, and it got seconded and voted three to two, let's say, for the fun of it, what's going to happen? Not much, probably. The governor's got two choices. He can just not do anything, and we're open. But more likely what would happen is that he would take this to the district court, Judge Walton, and plead to the court that we've gone outside of our jurisdictional boundaries. Because that's where, if we go outside of our jurisdiction, our boundaries as our, as a Commissioners' Court, it's taken up to the district court to make that decision to whether they, the court agrees with that or not. And you know what? Now we got something to take up to the appellate level and maybe down to the Texas Supreme Court, and maybe we can get a decision whether, from the court, whether this is a constitutional executive order or not. So you want me to make a motion, or do you, anybody else have something to say?
I just want to say one thing. Dave, I agree with you. It needs to go to the district court. We haven't done that yet, have we? I mean, isn't that where it belongs? I don't want to get into lawyer talk with you. I don't even want to go there. I just want to make a, something that makes sense. There's one of those, there's one of these orders that says that, that it ought to, it needs to go to the district court, so then it can go to, and deny, go to the Supreme Court of Texas, and the Supreme Court of the United States. That's as much legal jargon as I've got, but I read that somewhere.
Well, so it seems that Commissioner Cotton agrees with me.
Take it to the district court.
So in that respect, he's, if I put this motion on the table, and we vote three to two, or five unanimous to adopt this resolution.
No, your resolution says that the governor's order is illegal and, and we're not going to abide by it. That's what it says. And certain terms.
I know, but the only way we're going, okay.
No, it's in the, it's in the resolution. We're saying that, in this resolution, you say that further resolve that all businesses in Hood County are hereby declared essential. Well, that's in violation of what the governor has put out through his CDC order and listed all of the businesses that are deemed essential. You're saying that's, that's not, that's not true, or that you don't agree with it, and that you want to stop that, that order that is declared by the governor, that he identified non-essential businesses, didn't he?
Yes, sir. That's exactly what it says.
Well, you're saying that, that you're going against that. So I'm not, so that's what, I'm going to have a problem with your resolution, that you're going against the governor's order.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion?
Anybody else?
Nope.
All right.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
You know, I will tell you this, every business, I don't care what it is, whether you, you know, work in a restaurant, or you're a lawyer or a doctor, it's essential if it feeds you and takes care of your family. The problem I'm having is, you know, you know, I can see some of the Dave's point where he thinks these are unconstitutional, and I've thought it myself. But as a commissioner, I don't believe I have the authority to tell you to go out and break the governor's orders or law, however you want to, you put it. But I will tell you this, businesses have the right to run the way they want, you know? If, if, you know, I'm not going to go tell you, you can't do this or do that. But, you know, I think businesses are smart enough and shown that they can figure out ways to adapt, and they have. I've watched them. But me as a commissioner, I don't believe I have the authority to tell you to go break the law. You know, I've always tried to adhere to the law, you know? I may not like them, you know? I got friends that get upset with speed limits, DWI laws, taxing laws, C-Bill laws, but, you know, we abide by them. And, but everybody's business is essential in this county. And no matter what, what anybody says, you know, we do have a, some orders that, you know, I have problems with it, but there's a way to go about it, you know? It's just, I'm just going to tell you, I don't have the authority to tell you to go break the law.
Anybody else have any further discussion regarding item number five? I hear a motion?
Yes, sir. Says the lone voice in the wilderness. I make a motion that we adopt and pass resolutions entitled Restoration of All County Constitutional Rights in Hood County, restoring our businesses back, letting our business people go back to work, as everybody's essential in this county. And adopt it as warranted.
Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Eagle to adopt his resolution stating as it is written. Do I hear a second, please? If not, the motion fails for lack of a second. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are now going to adjourn into executive session to consider the patience of our, for an auditor for the county of Hood. Thank you very much. We stand. We are now reconvening after being in executive session and deciding and discussing the auditors' vote. Do I hear any more discussion, or do I hear a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, Judge. I'm going to make a motion that we retain Kenner Masiders, is that correct?
Masters.
Masters. The spelling in there, I'm just reading the phonetic spelling here. And Lunsford for the auditor.
And I step in that motion. Now, I want everybody to call out that Dave Eagle has made the motion, and I have seconded Dave Eagle's motion.
On the same day. The same day, so.
All right, the motion been made in second, that we return K, M, and L as our auditors. Then made by Commissioner Eagle, seconded by County Judge Ron Maston Hill. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And with that, I adjourn the Commissioners' Court.